Hi. Okay, good afternoon. It is January 3rd, 2025. 2025, can you believe it? My goodness. Welcome to the Zoom session for the Montana State Library Commission. I'm Robin Scribner, the chairman of the Montana State Library Commission, and I'm here in snowy central Montana. And I'd like to ask our other commissioners and staff to introduce themselves. So let's go ahead with Tom.
Tom Burnett, Bozeman.
Okay, we'll go alphabetical. Carmen.
Carmen Cathbertson, Calispel. I am right now in Phoenix.
Oh, awesome. Warm Phoenix. Yay. Okay, Tammy?
Tammy Hall, I'm in Bozeman, but tomorrow I'll be in Frisco to watch our Babcats.
Oh, Babcats. Okay, and Brian?
Brian Rossman, I'm in Bozeman today.
And Peggy?
Hello, I'm Peggy Taylor, and I'm in Whitefish today.
All right, great. And I don't know, Elsie's not here, is she?
Haven't seen her.
Okay, Elsie hasn't made it. Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead, and then we have our staff. Go ahead, Jenny.
Hi, everyone. Jenny Staff, State Librarian.
Okay, would anybody else like to introduce themselves? If not, that's fine. Okay. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing as there are none, we will continue. So we are going to be having basically just discussion items today, and there will be no business conducted. We are going to discuss the legislative preparation. My goodness, if you have, if you were able to look at the what we received from the legislative session, you'll see that we are up on the ninth, 10th, and 13th of Montana State Library. And I'll let Jenny explain that a little bit. What's going on here?
Sounds good. So Legislative Finance Committee has directed all of the chairs of the various budget sections to conduct a deep dive into two programs that they oversee in their budget sections. And just as a reminder, we fall under Section E, the education section. And Chair Beatty has decided that the two programs that he is going to review are the K-12 Base Aid and the Montana State Library. For budget purposes, the Montana State Library is considered one program. So they are going to do what they're calling a deep dive into our budget over three days. This is not typical for us. Typically, our budget hearing would just occur in a morning where the committee would hear testimony from the agency. They would get updates from their financial analyst about the proposals that are in the governor's budget. There'd be an opportunity for a public comment and then questions from the committee. Yesterday, we received a list of questions from our fiscal analyst. Her name is Julia Patton. They are going to be looking for information from us about budget expenditures from the past fiscal year, planned budgets for the coming biennium, information about the activities and cost drivers for our work. They want to know about how we measure our performance. They want to know things like opportunities for efficiencies that we see in our work and those kinds of things. So we are working hard to consider the questions and be prepared for three days of budget hearings and discussion with the Budget Committee. As Robin said, that's going to start next Thursday morning, so kind of right out of the chute for our Budget Committee. And we are scheduled to continue each morning through Monday, January 13.
Jenny, who is going? Not counting the weekend?
Right, they don't meet on the weekends.
They're meeting Saturday this year, I thought.
They are, but the, but our Budget Committee will not. They typically will meet as the House and Senate floors.
Nine, 10, and 13.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question. Jenny, who, who is going to give them all the answers to these questions?
So we will be working as a team. It'll be myself, Melissa, as our Central Services Administrator, and Evan, as our Digital Library Administrator. A lot of the key performance metrics Rebecca is providing input on. And then, of course, all of the program leads are providing input on their work plans and, and goals, relying on things like the information that's in our current work plan to respond to that kind of information. So we're really trying to, as much as possible, use the information that we already have prepared.
So do you have, do you have a schedule of who's planning to be in front of the committee at what time?
We don't, and I have asked Julia to give us more concrete information about what to expect over those three days because this is new for us, and I haven't heard back from her yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I do know we're scheduled, I don't have the schedule in front of me. It's in the mornings, those, those three days. So it won't occur in the afternoons, but it is scheduled for the, those three mornings.
I have a question. Is there an opportunity for us to observe these committee meetings?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah. And I'm happy to send you the link to the, the how, how you view those online.
Yeah, if you would, please send them, send them to all of us.
Yep.
Hey, I'm going to try to get over there on Thursday. It just depends on weather and, and my life, and we'll, but we'll see how it goes from. I told Jenny I'm not sure if I'll be alive after four days or five, four nights and five days with my grandson. I'm not sure, but I will try. I'm a wuss. But, so if anybody else is, does anybody else have plans to be there for the library, Library Legislative Night?
I plan on being there for that.
Tammy here, I will not.
I'm not planning on it while I'm here.
I will be at my sister's retirement party.
And I won't be in town either for that.
You'll still be in Phoenix. Great. Well, that'll be good. Okay.
I might, this is Suzie Headlin. Hi, sorry for joining a moment late. I might be able to be there or, you know, can have a staff that are working with, with all of the legislative work.
Great. Well, thank you, Suzie, for joining us. We sure appreciate it.
Hi, Suzie.
Hi. I can start the video.
There you are. There you are.
Good to see you. I'm having my last day at school, so it's a little crazy today.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. Well, welcome. We're so glad to have you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
I'm Robin Scribner. By the way, I'm the chairman of the State Library Commission, and then everybody else is, you may be able to see them.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate the invite.
All right, everybody. Let's see. What else? Where do we need to go from there then, Jenny?
We had talked in your previous meeting about the process for keeping commissioners up to date on the status of bills that we're tracking and whether or not the commission wanted to have any more organized process for providing input on pieces of legislation. So the bill tracking site from the Legislative Services is now up and running. So we have a little bit more insights and ability to track bills as they're progressing through the session. I can share information about those bills. At the last meeting, we had talked about me sharing out kind of a regular update of the bills that we are watching here at the State Library. We had talked about not necessarily sharing a position, but just informational about the bills that we're tracking and their status as they're moving through the legislative process. I don't know if, if you have given any further thought into how you might want to be involved in that kind of bill tracking, looking for more input from, from you.
I guess. Sorry, Tom. I guess my, my question is, how do you interact with the staff? How do you inform them of what's going on? What, what do you internally send around, and how can you just put the commission into that same loop?
Sure. I send a spreadsheet. I'm and I can perhaps share my, and I'm sharing the agenda, so let me stop sharing the agenda if I can. You should not let me run these meetings.
Somebody has to run it, Jenny, so we appreciate it.
I hope you're seeing a spreadsheet.
We are.
So this is just a spreadsheet that's generated state out of Legislative Services Bill Tracking System. And so this shows the bills right now that have been introduced that I'm tracking. You can see there's an appropriations bill, long-range planning, and the state employee pay plan. And so this is what I would share with staff and what I would share with the commission.
Jenny, this is Tammy. What precipitated them asking for the deep dive on those three days or whatever? Do you know?
Yeah. Well, good question. Like I said, Legislative Finance has directed each of their budget chairs to do a deep dive into a couple of their programs. And Chair Beatty has said that he wants to raise the visibility of the State Library. In his view, the legislature isn't aware of the breadth of services that we offer. And so he views this as an opportunity to increase awareness of the variety of services that are made available through the State Library.
So just to summarize, what, what I would love to see is that you just, Jenny, share with us what you share with the staff, whether that's just a memo that you send out or a digest of what happened or the spreadsheet. Just, just put the whole commission in the loop of those communications. I think that would be great. Thank you.
I agree. Of course, the ones that we're, that we are involved in, if, if we could watch those, if you, so if you put something out prior to that so that we could watch. Right, the hearings, anything that may be of interest or may, may affect us. So of course, we'd have to know about that sooner, but like results or whatever, but I agree, whatever you let the staff know about would be.
Great. That sounds great.
Anyone else have an opinion?
Works for me.
And if you ever anytime need more information or have questions, of course, please let me know. And just so you know, my typical process is to send out updates once a week. I try to do them on Fridays. Unless something happens that needs more timely communication.
Right. Okay. Any, any, any comments about that? Okay. Okay, we discussed the deep dive. Do we need to answer any more questions about the deep dive? Okay. And so let's go on to the consistent testimony statement. Do we need, do we want to have a, a statement that we discussed this at the last meeting concerning what we possibly would want to say as a commission as a whole? Elsie suggested that we perhaps have a, have a across-the-board statement that we, we would each know what we're, what we should put out there if anyone asks us. Is there any ideas? Does anybody have any ideas that they want to share?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom.
I'd like to keep it as brief as possible, maybe state three bullet points of the essential work of the, of the State Library that is involved in mapping and information services, natural resources, assistance to local libraries. And those are our big three, or whatever the big three are. Just keep it really, really taut.
Robin?
I just want to, could I just make sure I captured what you said? Mapping and information services, natural resource information, and assistance to local libraries.
Yeah, I think the, the couple of information services might be a little broad. That's often associated with data services. Might not be the right way to say that. So we might find something else to be part of that threesome. Open to ideas.
Robyn, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Tammy.
Mine's more a question. If we have a comment in there, which I think would be appropriate, that we want to help libraries serve their consumers. And if we talk about the consumers, I certainly want to include parents and children. If we have that, I don't know if that's part of, I think that is a wing of what we do. You know, obviously, the information service and what Tom's talking about, those are very important services, but so is that appropriate too? Isn't that one of our constituents or?
Yeah, our patrons, yes. So help libraries, help libraries serve their patrons, parents, and children, and communities.
And they could be patrons and then example, parents.
Right.
Community, whatever.
Okay, so we don't want to get it too long.
No, but that is a major portion. Initially, that was.
Right. I guess we could, it's where Tom said assistance to local libraries, we could say provide help to local libraries. Say something like that. Yeah.
And what were the other two, Tom?
The mapping and info systems and natural resources. Mapping is huge because of the cadastral and you know, so we definitely need, that's one of our huge. And our natural resources. So.
But does mapping fall under a broader title?
I think, I think mapping is sufficient and it, it, it's something that's concrete enough that people understand. I have mapping and information services, natural resource information, and assistance to local libraries to provide services to their communities, including parents and children.
Perfect.
Perfect. Are we possibly misleading people into thinking that we only support public libraries? And not school libraries, academic libraries, special libraries, medical libraries?
Maybe take out local and say all, all libraries?
There you go. You're right, because it is, we are, yeah, we are all libraries.
Whatever makes people think of not only public libraries. I don't know how you, you know, how you create that thought that it's not just about the public libraries.
Maybe public and specialty libraries, public school and specialty libraries.
That's a good way to word it.
When I send you a link to the information on how to listen to recordings, I can, I can send this back and make sure we've captured it.
Okay. So we're simply making a statement about what we're doing, what the State Library is doing?
Yeah, I think when, when Elsie described it, it was, you know, when you, when you introduce yourself as a representative of the State Library, I would say, you know, the State Library provides mapping and information services, natural resource information, and so forth.
That, I like all of those. I, I think that those three points are huge. I mean, that's what we do. I think that, I think we kind of already got to the point.
Good job.
Would you read it one more time, please, Jenny?
Yeah. Mapping and information services, natural resource information, and assistance to public school and special libraries to provide services to their communities, including parents and children.
Does that satisfy everyone?
I'm okay with that.
Carmen? I see you nodding. Okay.
Yes.
Peggy?
The only thing I, that came to mind was the order of it. Is, is, does it seem like mapping's the most important or what? The order of it. But.
One thing that we could do is, depending on the, the hearing, just reverse the order. So if it happens to be a bill that has something to do with GIS, lead with mapping. If it has to do with natural resource information, lead with natural resource information.
Good idea.
And just switch it up.
I like that idea.
Okay. Tammy, how does it sound for you?
Yes, I was concerned about that too. I know that there was a time when helping the local libraries with their services and making it was one of our major items. And now we've added, and natural resource, I think, was always part of it. But I think the mapping and all that is new. I, I, that's why I felt it was important to have assisting local libraries, public school, and specialty, because I think it's important that they don't feel like they've been shoved aside. You know, that's really an important part of our service, but only one part. So I if it's an official statement, I, I don't know how you're going to word it, but I would keep service to the local libraries pretty high on the list, just.
Great. Okay, Brian?
Yeah, I'm okay with the statement. I, I kind of agree that I think that we should highlight our assistance that the State Library provides to, to other libraries, to Montana libraries. That, that might be a word to insert as well as Montana.
That's a good addition. Okay, thanks, Brian. Okay, Suzie, how does it sound to you?
Sorry, sounds good to me.
And Elsie, you're not here, so darn it, I can't ask you. Okay, I believe that, I believe we kind of have a consensus. And we don't have to vote on it, but I, I think that we've come up with a really good plan here. I think that we'll, we should just go ahead with that. It's, it sounds very concise and to the point, so let's do it. All right. Okay, there, so let's go on to the commission participation during spring Federation meetings. I guess there was a question about having a spot on during the Confederate, the, the Confederation, sorry, during the Federation meetings for the commission. My big concern is there, I guess, I have forgotten my, my Federation meeting a couple of times. And I know that there have been some where we have not attended. So that's my biggest concern about actually having a time for commissioners during the Federation meetings. What, who can, who can speak to that? I'm not sure who it was that, oh, was it Carmen? Was it you that was interested in having some, having a time period on the Federation meetings? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I, I think.
I think it was me. I think I said it. I think I said it. But I'm trying to remember our conversation at that time. Was that more involvement and such, but, but you're right about, we, we just have to be very sure that we were going to participate or be in touch with them.
Right. I guess we could always be part of other, other business during their meetings. And we could let, there's usually facilitator that we receive an email from, and we can always say, hey, I'm going to be there. I would like a time to speak. I know that when I go, I usually make a point of introducing myself and saying a few words, and they may not be the most intelligent words, but I always try to say something to them to let them know, you know, that who I am and, and, and how much I appreciate the Federation, I, because I do appreciate the Federation. So I guess we could go that way. What are, what, how, what are your, what do you think? Maybe other business? And speaking with that facilitator?
I, I do not think that we have an official role as the commission to bring those meetings. I think it's good to be, that, that whoever feels like it can be there as an observer. But we don't, I, I don't see us representing the State Library to the federations. I think that's Jenny's and the staff's job. But it doesn't hurt for us to observe the, the functioning of the federations. I agree with the, with the chairperson here that that's, they're, they're great. They're valuable for the public libraries.
Right. And yeah, I totally, we are not, we, we are not a body without each other. So I just usually, you know, introduce myself in that, and it's such a good idea, because then they know, they have a face. You know, they have a face to us and that we are interested. So that's why we try to attend each of the meetings with somebody via Zoom or in person. But, but yeah, we do not have a specific role, so I'm not sure that having a, having a, a certain time to speak or, or for us would even be appropriate. So.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tammy.
I think it's important that we be listeners for that, and somewhere there needs to be the ability to report back to the whole commission. I think what we heard as listeners of their meetings, their Federation meetings, I think that adds a personal touch to being involved with the federations. So I would just think that would be good to, when the Federation gives their reports, maybe the commissioner who was there to listen and learn could maybe share if they wanted to.
Definitely.
Madam Chair, maybe, maybe it would be useful if we received notice a couple of days before each meeting with the Zoom link, and then just make sure that only up to three of us attend any one meeting, so we don't have a quorum there. Because if we do, then we need to do, put out the announcement that we're there and we're not conducting any business. And then maybe, you know, the, the commissioners that do want to zoom in need to report to Jenny, so Jenny can count. And there's two or maybe three of us, or just one of us listening in on each of them. I think that would be great.
Well, we usually sign up for, for Federation meetings, remember during one of, during one of our meetings. I guess, and, and you know what, if, if we have two or three people attending via Zoom, I think that's fine too. But you're right, we can't have a quorum, definitely. Jenny, what do you, what do you think? Should we do the, should we let you know that we are planning on attending? Should we let the, whoever, how, what should we do there?
Why don't we bring the dates for the Federation meetings to your February meeting? And to the extent that you know your calendars and can sign up for some of those, we can track that information. I'm, I'm very happy to share out the meeting information once the agendas are posted. And have you let me know if you want to attend one of them and, and then let you know once we've reached that threshold if it looks like we're going to potentially reach a quorum.
That sounds good. All right. Okay, we, that sounds like a plan. Does that sound all right with everybody? I'm hoping so.
Yeah, and I like Tammy's idea of maybe just a quick report time of, of what the Federation is, is interested in at the time and what, I, I think we wanted to be sure and ask them about the trustee training and things as such too. So correlate it back to the funding that we've been giving them.
Right. Right, great. Okay. Okay, sounds good, everybody. So let's go on to the goal-setting process, our next steps. We need to set goals for ourselves and for Jenny, and we'll, we'll have to get that done instead of, sooner rather than later. I'm not sure if how how prepared we are to go ahead with starting today. Are we prepared? Is anyone prepared for to set any goals?
What has been the commission's process in the past to do this?
Well, we have talked about it and never done it as far as since I've been on, right? We have always said, well, we need to set goals, and we just haven't gotten to them. Basically, Jenny usually sets her own goals. And we've just said, yes, go ahead. I guess we we as a kind of as a group, or or it says statutorily that we are supposed to set goals, correct? Jenny?
Not sure in in statute, but definitely it's.
Bylaws, isn't it, in bylaws?
Yeah.
Bylaws.
Yeah.
In our bylaws, it says that we are and we so it has not been done. So we kind of need to we need to get a process going so that it is done. So.
Madam Chair, yeah, it this is Tammy. I think one of the goals we decided on this year was to work on our improving the relationship and communication, open communication between us and Jenny, so that we were on the same page. And as far as what was going to the staff and making it clear what we want. And so that was more process driven. I think that was a process driven goal for this year is to make sure that our we were being clear with our directive. And I don't know how you want to word that, but I do think that was an important goal that we have to make it really clear what we are asking of Jenny so that there isn't a communication breakdown. I think sometimes it's hard when you have seven different voices addressing different things, and we come to what we think is an agreement, and then maybe it wasn't. Again, I think we owned that as a commission that we needed to make sure that process. And we did a few of those things at the last meeting, I think, where we said, now, could you repeat what we've directed, what you heard is directed to do so that we knew that the message was coming through more clear?
Right. And we asked that it was placed minutes so that it was so that we all we all knew for sure that that's exactly what was said, rather than having to go back and you.
And I think that was one of the other goals we talked about was the minutes needed to be more reflective of what happened at the meeting. I think there are two ways you can go with that. There's nothing wrong with the way we did it with just recording action items. But if we spent quite a bit of time on a discussion item and agreed to continue talking about it or whatever, that item should at least be mentioned in. And so the goal of the minutes was also, and I think you were bringing that up. So I think there was the clarifying the communication of what expect was expected after with Jenny, because a motion can still be confusing. So I think it's helpful after the motion to say, okay, now Jenny, help us understand how did that? What did that direct you to do? What's your opinion of that? Sometimes it's just as clear of saying, did you read that as an action item or as a research item? You know, it so that makes it clear. And then again, the second thing we talked about was making the minutes more reflective.
Those are all good points. Thank you. Very good points. So we need so those are all goals right in right in there, the minutes and the and the communication. Those those are one that could be one, two, and then and then what was the other one, Tammy?
The minutes. And then I had a third one that that I was. Oh, it just left me. I'm sorry. Sugar. Too much sugar over Christmas. Yeah. I think it was it'll come back just a minute. Go ahead and go to someone else, please.
Okay, does anybody else have any any goals, any ideas? Carmen, did you?
I have a suggestion to maybe make our meetings and motions more fruitful. After we make a motion and that gets reported or recorded verbatim, we need to, as a commission, have a way to say, okay, that's the letter of the motion. Jenny, how do you read the spirit or the intention of this motion? Because it's one thing to follow the letter of something, and it's another thing to follow the spirit of something. And we should just make sure that 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 comes across as clear as the wording of the motion itself.
Yep.
And if we can, you know, remind ourselves in the agenda to to ask for that after we've made a motion, we voted on it, maybe ask, okay, Jenny, what is your how would you paraphrase what we want here, what the commission has just decided? How would you paraphrase that? Just to to check back in and make sure the communication comes across.
Sure. And and then it's clarified for everyone.
Yep.
Perfect. That's a great idea.
Because you can you can fiddle with a wording and think you're communicating clearly, and maybe you're still not really getting across what you're trying to get across.
And again, that like we said, we have debates and then come up with in past, but sometimes people are hearing different things. So I think it's real fair after the motion to just ask Jenny to review. You know, do you see this as an action or as a research or? I remember the third item. I'm sorry, it just ran and it ran back by. So we have talked a lot about the credit that we are giving out. There's quite a bit, I think, of important connotation that comes with that we give credited courses that the librarians have to take, need to take, etc. And we have in the past given other crew groups around the state permission to give their classes for credit. And I think that was a little more loosey goosey than I feel it should be, because I think we're really, we have a great responsibility to that, and that is part of our statute responsibility. So I'd like to see us have a goal process of how do we decide who is going to be acceptable to give credit? Because we're putting our name behind that. And what kinds of things should they be addressing? As I've said in the past, all school board members are required to take training to become a school board member. And but it the the classes they offer are on the legislative process, the budget and the law, they're pretty and running a meeting, evaluating staff, they're pretty what I would call objective topics. And so I think we have to have a discussion about whether we want to stay with those objective topics that we give credit for. And if we move beyond them, what would that look like?
I see what you're saying.
Was that clear, maybe?
So.
Just to.
Go ahead.
So Tammy, what you're what you're wanting is for the commission to dive into accreditation or or do you want to report from staff as to how they decide what classes count towards accreditation or where they find them or how they review them before they say yes? I'm I I think the process at this point is really what is user friendly in that if you find a class and you think this would be a good one, you can request that the state library say yes to you getting credit for this class. Is that right, Jenny?
Um, I think more or less, and Tracy's on, and I would ask her to to clarify anything I misstate. If a if a library director, for example, takes a a training for continuing education and their board or board chair signs off on that, then the state library approves those credits. So it's really a decision kind of at the local level. As long as the training falls within those broad training categories like administration and technical services, public service, those kinds of broad areas. Tracy, did I misstate that at all?
Tracy, you're not on. Sorry. You're still we still can't hear you. Can you hear us? Can't hear you.
Try this.
There you are.
All right. Yes, Jenny, you are correct. It is a matter of local control, and the director verifies for staff and board chairs verify for the director. And if a board chair chooses to earn continuing education credits, their credits are verified by the vice chair. And Cole Colay is who people usually work with to determine what category the credits fall under.
Follow up question?
Yes.
So what what goes? What gets promoted by the state library and put out as continuing education classes or recommended content or content? Or what what do we as a state library suggest people take?
Do you want me to answer that, Jenny?
Yes, please.
Okay. So primarily, our classes, which probably fit Tammy's objective, you know, running meetings, the duties of the board, duties of the director. And then we do list Montana Library Association classes or allow people to claim credit for them. That's partially an efficiency thing, because that is one of the major places where people earn credits, particularly for things that are like customer service and programming. Because MLA tends to cover more of those front facing services than we have, at least at this point in our history. And then a lot of times, I would say, Colay and myself and the other consultants will typically ask the people, what is it you're trying to do? What is it you want to learn? And then we try to match them with either other, maybe other state libraries have worked in that area or one of the other providers like Web Junction has webinars in that particular area. Like I'm thinking of like facilities management and things like that as well. And then this is sort of related to your question, Carmen, but we're always constantly listening for what people are asking about and trying to meet their needs by finding presenters, usually Montana presenters. But sometimes it's people like economists to provide training for people on that topic. Did that answer your question?
Yep, yep, pretty good. So the question occurs to me, we try to kind of make clear to the public that we are separate from the MLA. Do we need to take that further and also go into these classes and say we do we promote them? Do we advertise them still if we want to present ourselves as separate? That's something for the commission to to think about. Yes.
The advantage of including MLA or some of the ones that are more popular in the Aspen system is you avoid duplication, and it's easier for the end user. But that's because for the end user, they don't have to type everything in. It's just right there in a drop down list, and they can select it, if that makes sense. But that's a that's a minor detail. I just wanted to share that as an efficiency we try to do for end users.
Ma- Madam Chair? This is Tammy. Am I on?
All right, yeah, go ahead, Tammy.
I think maybe this is a this discussion has been great, and I think it shows why I feel this needs to be clarification of this whole process of the continuing ed credits needs to be a goal for the year. I I think what we've been discussing, for me personally, maybe not others, I want to be sure we're not going in the wrong direction. For me, the right direction is that we get examples of what classes are wanted and needed. But it comes to us where who's going to get accredited. I don't believe that it's appropriate for a local librarian and their board of directors to agree to a certain course for them. And then, as a result, we put it out as a course for everybody. It may be something they need in their area. And it might be appropriate to put it to the state, but I don't think it should be automatic. Secondly, I really have trouble with listing the American Library Association materials, because many of our libraries are still members of ALA. We're not, but they are, and that's appropriate for them. And if they want those courses, they can take them, work it out with their local board, pay for them, do whatever they need. But because we're not officially a member of ALA, I think it's inappropriate to list those classes as accreditation.
Uh, I don't. Do we still list ALA classes, Jenny?
We don't.
We don't.
No, we don't.
Good. Thank you. I misunderstood that. I appreciate the correction.
Maybe it's the Montana lib, the MLA, maybe that's what we were thinking.
And I think, but you know, what Tracy's describing is when MLA offers a webinar or the their conference sessions, those sessions are included in our Aspen system. So it makes it easy and efficient for a librarian to go into Aspen and claim credits if they attended those sessions.
Yes, that much clearer, Jenny. And it's actually really just like the conference, because they can they get a few hundred attendees. And so, you know, that's why we list it, if that helps to explain.
It does. I think to be personal, you know, very honest about where I'm coming from with this issue is that both for the ALA and somewhat for the MLA for a while, their focus sort of shifted to what I would call subjective topics, gender identity, the DIA. And I think as a result, there was sort of a heavy push on those kinds of classes. They don't fall under what I would consider leadership, running a meeting, the law, the bills, the budgeting. And so, again, if people want those classes and their local board wants to pay for them to take those classes, great. But I'm not sure where the rest, you know, that we don't, we need to understand who's providing those, how balanced they are. We're not in the job of indoctrination. We're in the job of education. So any of those topics being offered have to be well balanced. That's our job.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom, go ahead.
I think this is a a good topic to pursue.
Yes.
It's just become obvious to me that we're called upon to certify something that other people choose. And that does most certification agencies, I don't think put their stamp of of approval on what well, if you were a college accreditor accreditor, you wouldn't say, I just choose a bunch of courses out there that you think fulfill the the job of educating an engineer. And then we'll just we'll give you the we'll we'll put our stamp of approval on that. Now, the creditor says, this is the package, and you show us how your stuff fits into it. So I I see that we are in a bit of a bind by offering our our credential to something that we do not design.
And I thank you, Tom, for clarifying that, because that's the whole point I was trying to make. I think we need to take very seriously that mandated responsibility of giving credit, continuing education. And we need to, it needs to mean something. And the information being accredited needs to be appropriate for the libraries in general, not just something being pursued by one.
Madam Chair? I agree, there's really two topics. There is the what is good or interesting for for a librarian or what they're interested in or what a trustee might want to know, which is a much wider field than what do we want to accredit people for. So it's it's two different topics. It's what classes are out there that you might want to take, and what do we give accreditation credit for? And I agree with Tammy that we maybe we as a commission should And I agree with Tammy that we, maybe we as a commission should clearly define what the goal of accreditation is. Obviously vaguely, it's the quality of library services that, that people in the state of Montana receive when they go to any library. We want that to be great library service. My, my very practical mind goes to, okay, you need to know the law, you need to know in your community. And in your type of library, what your rights and responsibilities are and how it functions. You need to understand the budgeting process that you are involved in. Those kinds of things, whereas there are other topics that have to do with what's currently fashionable in library world. And, and that's different. To me, that's not what accreditation should focus on. Even though you could very well say that also has to do with the quality of the service or how innovative the service is. So there's, there's a, there's a line there somewhere and I think we, the commission. Need to find out and give direction to the state library. What we consider. Accreditation necessary or worthy and what, whatnot. And the classes we advertise or promote should only be those that the commission considers. Useful in that respect. And, and you know, I don't, I can't come up with exactly where that line is right now, but I think that's, that's where we need to head. What is accreditation worthy? And what is just if you're interested because you're a professional and you want to get more innovative with your service. Or you, you're really interested in, in this particular topic, you know, there's lots of classes for you to take, go for it. And the more you know, the better off you are. But what do we actually give accreditation for? And what is the goal of accreditation from the state library?
And I would, I would agree with Carmen. Carmen, that you as a trustee had to take some classes, right? And some accreditation? Or did you just take them by choice?
It is voluntary for trustees to get accredited. And the Flathead County Library Board, we all have done it and gotten accredited. Because it's useful.
Yes. And did you find some classes more useful than others?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And, okay.
So I, I think we, we have a pretty good sense of what your questions are. I've taken some notes. I'll, I'll get with Tracy and our team and maybe we can propose back to you at your next business meeting. Sort of a, a, a study framework to make sure that we fully understand your questions. And what kind of plan or process we can go through to help identify those questions. I think the other thing that is in my mind is what if any administrative rules we might have to create in order to, to. Most clearly articulate what that, what that line is like Carmen described. So we've got some research to do to bring back to the commission as this goal takes shape.
And would you please Jenny, share whatever is currently. What, whatever materials we currently have in writing or on the website that deal with accreditation? How has that been presented in the past as an activity?
Yeah. Yep, sounds good.
Any of, anything else? Any other discussion? On this topic or the, and if not, we'll go on to if there's any more goals that we would like to. Set.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Think we should consider. Finding our baseline level of trustee training, trustee accreditation. And hundreds of trustees in the state. I don't know that we know how, how well-trained they are. And. And, and then once we understand that, we might tighten up our, some of our offerings. And, and, and try to move that, move off of that baseline. We understand and we just, we were just told that one city library, all the trustees are accredited. Because they've taken the courses and, and applied for the, the credit. As we've talked over the last couple of years, we know there's a need for more training. And it may be leading the horse to the water situation. At least we need to know where we stand.
Yep. That sounds good.
Uh, one more comment. In line with the trustee thing, I would love as a very concrete goal that we could shorten the trustee handbook. Um, it is now two volumes and I've noticed, uh, reading it myself that it contains facts. And then best practice suggestions. And I think it should just contain facts.
Interesting.
I know that that's on staff's work plan to look at that, that trustee manual.
And simply in the interest of making it short and useful, there's not really anything wrong with giving suggestions. But maybe that could be put into a supplement. Because I thought, you know, the, those are all volunteers. They are not getting paid. Library staff is getting paid. So that's a, that's a different scenario if you have to sit down for three hours and read something. If you're getting paid for those three hours, you're differently motivated from a volunteer who is given a two-volume thing and said you should read this. The shorter we can make it, um, to whet the appetite of those trustees, the better. And then we can offer them a second volume, say here's best practice suggestions. Um, you know, and that's, that's great too, but, but shorten that initial thing because they are volunteers. I think that would be really, really useful to draw them in first and not hand them a big fat thing that, that is somewhat of a turnoff.
Great suggestion. That's a very good suggestion. Okay, anyone else? So that's another goal. What would be another? Do we have any more goal suggestions?
We discussed during the evaluation of taking a look at the job description. And, and especially the percentages of time. I don't know if that's a goal for us or, but that's something we did mention.
That's right. Is, would that be a goal for us Jenny? Or would that be part of?
I think it, I think it could be a goal. It's probably something we would want to do with the, the personnel committee. Kind of sit down together and, and evaluate the, the nature of the, my current job description and make sure it's accurate and reflecting. Percentages of, of time worked.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the evaluation issue was something we said we'd like added to our goals. Just the whole evaluation on the, the instrument we use. On the time comparisons of what Jenny's asked to do. I think that all could be a very serious goal that we get worked out before we need that instrument.
Right, right. And that is, that is, that was one of them main goals, was the instrument of the evaluation. Yes, we need to, um, we need to really examine that. We have a couple of different tools. That have been. Suggested, so we need to look at those tools. Before we go into the evaluation in, the evaluation process starting in October generally. So let's, yeah, we need to really look at that.
Was there anything with the budget that we set as a goal? Or is that just regular that we do already? I don't remember if that was specific.
It was more involvement in the process, getting ready for the legislative session was one comment.
Now, we, we, I guess we said that if we had known some of the proposals earlier in the process. It wouldn't have been quite as much of a, a shock to, to have some of them dishonored.
Right, and, and, and part of it, I felt I should have taken upon myself to pass. We should have passed along the budget and what the requests were.
Sooner.
Sooner, what, yeah. Correct. We should, and we should do that every time. That's when, that should be one of our goals is making sure that. We are all. In on, I'll, I'll get the knowledge a little bit fast, a little bit, maybe not faster, but I need to pass on. And that's why I passed on what I did pass on about the legislative, about the questions and the legislative deep dive. And, and hopefully I passed on everything else, um, just to let you know. What was going on. Um, not that it came very early, but. On my part. So, so that's what my, my goal for myself is to, to pass on the information. Not a lot of what Jenny sends to me. I will, I plan on passing on to you, the commissioners. That's a goal I'm setting for myself.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I picture the real-time network being self-sustaining. And. A goal for that was set, a goal or a timeline for that, I believe was, uh, set for July 2025. And. I, I would like to monitor that. And that's a, that's a hope of mine. The commission might take a active role in, in. Furthering that. So I, I just throw that out. It's a, it's an important project we've undertaken and it's well underway. It's had a lot of investment. It has a lot of value. But are we on track? And. How soon are we going to be self-sustaining?
The, the glide, glide path that we had identified has it to be self-sustaining in 2029.
That's not my understanding, sorry. But yeah, we can go, we can revisit that history.
And I, I can share with you that glide path that's been in our media materials and legislative materials as well.
That might have, uh, Madam Chair and State Librarian, that might have. Been built on the assumption of further infusions that we're not envisioning. We should talk more about this, I think.
We should.
Yeah.
Is that an agenda item we want set up for one of our, for our February meeting, Tom, or is that?
Yes.
We, we should make it as a discussion item for February, I think. Is that clear Jenny? Would you think that was a good step?
Yeah, we'll bring you that glide, glide path that's been presented as our working understanding of the, the development process. And, and start the conversation from there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead Carmen.
Um, this talking about the agenda brings to mind, I have a request for a report. From Jenny that would let us know what. Budget items are continuing that have been voted on in previous legislative sessions. Do we have any increases that are just continuing because they were voted in, in previous sessions? What would that be? Um, just as an information item, a report on.
So a review of our base, what our base budget is and what that looks like going forward? Okay.
Yeah, what's, what's already been voted on earlier by earlier legislation, legislators that we have coming now. I would like to know that. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I have a suggestion. Since a large part of our work has to do with LiDAR and mapping and cadastral and 911. I think we, as a commission, owe it to our staff to know more about that stuff. And maybe we could pursue it individually or in small non-quorum groups. Um, maybe on YouTube, we could take some training from our staff. Uh, we could look outside, but. None of us are GIS specialists. None of us have ever flown a, a LiDAR flight. And. So we're in kind of a weak position to, to be leading this, this effort. And. We, we might come up with a plan. We might do something about that.
And would you like staff to help identify some training opportunities?
I think that'd be great. Um, I've looked around the internet. I've spent a few hours. It's a fascinating topic. It's fast-changing. AI is changing it every day. There are cities and counties that some are very involved in it, some don't. Uh, we, we offer grants in it. But sometimes we are so uninformed, we don't even use the right acronym.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a public service we, we opt to, uh, opt to provide, informing ourselves.
Okay. Any other suggestions? So is that a goal?
Well, Madam Chair, this is Tammy. Um, I agree with Tom. I have tried, when we finish a meeting, I feel like I'm understanding things. And then we get a little further away from it and it's a little harder. When we get more. Study on this, I would also like to try to see the big picture as to what other people are doing. You know, the business of the year for Montana went to a company in Bozeman. Who is mapping from airplanes. Uh, the discharge or whatever the right word is. Of methane gas from oil or from gas and oil wells. And then working with the state and the owners of those wells to fix if there's too much of that. Well, obviously that's another company that was just a word of business of the year that's also doing mapping in 3D from the air. So I need to understand if we're overlapping on some of our things or if we're the only ones offering these. And that's just very confusing for me. Maybe not for other people. But when I hear of other companies doing this, I think, okay, help me understand what our part is.
Okay, I hear you Tammy.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tom.
That comment by Commissioner Hall makes me think. It would be nice to know how other states are involved in GIS. And in, in what, uh, what they leave to the private sector in those states. How they interact with their other governmental entities, counties and cities. Um, and the corporate world. Um, whether we're doing more, less or the same, uh, just it's, I'm sure that, I'm guessing there's a, there's a wide variety. Of state involvement in these kinds of services. And all we have is, to the extent that we have any, we have just a narrow little view of, of what Montana is, is offering. Primarily through the state library. But also through some other entities like Department of Transportation and.
Right.
I think DNRC has got a little bit of GIS going. Our county's got a GIS office.
Yep. Yep, we, we can help provide sort of a. A ma, well, a map of the GIS ecosystem, if you will. And the roles and responsibilities.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Brian.
So I'm just wondering what the.
The process will be with respect to these goals. Where are they going to be? I, in terms of what I wrote down, I counted seven goals that we were discussed. Uh, where are those going to be reflected? And how is the commission going to hold itself accountable? Uh, at the end of the year or when moving forward to know if we actually are making progress on these goals. I mean, should these goals appear on the commission website, for example, for the next year? Just in the interest of transparency.
I think that was a big part of the whole discussion that we had at the last meeting, um, on goal setting. We talk about it every year. Let's set some goals for just this year. Then it kind of doesn't happen. And I think Brian makes a really good point. Um, I would ask in February. That we get a, just a. Pre- preliminary document saying, these are the goals we talked about. Um, the staff has reviewed them. Are they doable? Are they clear? How would it be evaluated? Uh, I can see that as being. Just what it means to start setting up goals for us. In fact, I think that probably is one of the best parts of this discussion for me today. Was just having a chance to hear from everybody where we, all these things have been discussed before, but we haven't been very. Concrete about, as Brian pointed out, setting up a process, setting up an evaluation, setting up a deadline. Goals are irrelevant without those. You have to have a clear understand what you want to do. You have to have a process to achieve it. And you have to have a deadline at which it's done and it's evaluated. So. For me, that's a good February. Item. To bring this back with some of the things. And I think some of the board members might, commission members might remember. What some of their agenda items were, um, or goal things and it might, maybe. They might spot something and remember it and send it in to.
What I would like to ask, I've taken some notes too. If Brian could send me his notes and anybody else, if you've taken notes. We can, um, we can compile that document and bring it back in February. And confirm that we all are in agreement and understanding about what these goals are. Identify the timelines for some of these, uh, you know, especially with the, the legislative session. Some of these might have to be backburner just a, a little bit to get us through the session. And then to what Tammy said, how, how will we be evaluated? Or what does success look like when we've accomplished this goals? Is it? That the commission is more confident in understanding our role in, in GIS in the state and, and how would that be evaluated? Et cetera. And so we can have a discussion in February about. How we evaluate success for each of those goals. Does that sound appropriate?
Absolutely. I see some of these goals as the evaluation tools. It's something we, we need to quit passing, kicking the can down, get it done, get it finished, close it. But something like the accreditation is kind of an ongoing or training on the, um, mapping. Those things will go on for a while, but the trustee handbook, I see that being something that can be done. Signed, finished for now, off the calendar.
Completed.
I, I agree with the idea of bringing this back for formal, um, action in February. And I would just also observe, I think, seven goals for a year for the commission is, might be overly ambitious. So we might want to identify maybe to top, what our top three are. And those are the ones that we work on over the coming year. So I just ask that you give that some thought before February.
Yeah, seven is a lofty goal, so. I, I do agree there. Um, some of it, I guess, I guess, some of it, I guess we are putting. More towards Jenny and the staff, um, so. That, those could be goals for her versus goals for the commission. So, I mean, we'd, we'd be able to differentiate, she'll be able to differentiate between that.
Yeah.
So, um, so that, but yes, I agree, Brian, that seven goals would be huge for us. Since we meet, we, we meet six times, but. So Je- Jenny, you'll be able to do, to differentiate.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
And then we can bring it back in, and we can visit about all of this in February. And that's what this work session is about, so that we can kind of get a jump on February, so we're not having all of this discussion at our meeting. So, are there, is there anything else that we need to address about the goals? If not, um. Let's discuss the Montana Library Association relationship. Where do we want to start there? Does anybody have any comments that they want to? To address? Jenny, did you, did you want to address any of it?
Well, I did want to let you know, there was a question at the last meeting about whether or not MLA wants. The commission and the conversations with commission to occur at the conference. And I did want to let you all know that. The planning committee did approve that session and I heard from Sarah Widger, MLA president, that, that they appreciate. The proposal, they like the idea of focusing on things like the Elsa Award. And they really do want the commission to be at the conference and an active part of the conference.
And from, from our meeting with, um, Sarah and Kirk and, and the previous president, I. Um, I feel like they're trying, they are trying to make a, make a difference, make a change, um. In. In what happens at this next conference. Um, so I, I guess we can go from there and. And hope it all turns out just perfectly. Does anybody have any comments they want to make?
Jenny, do you have access to their mission statement? What is the mission of the MLA?
I don't have it readily available.
I just don't remember. I'm sure I read it, um. This, cause currently it seems to be their main role is lobbying, as a lobbying group for the, for the state.
So Carmen, I just pulled up their website and, uh, the mission of the Montana Library Association is to develop. Promote and improve library and information services and the profession of librarianship in order to enhance learning. And ensure access to information for all.
Okay.
This is Tammy. Yes, I, I, as I've said before, the interaction with them at the MLA is a convention to me is. Um, one of the most uplifting, I found times, I learned a lot. It was very helpful. So I'm glad. That we're back on, um, and that they will come to the meeting and not boycott it. That, that means a lot, I think. Let's start fresh in twenty twenty-five. I do think there was some discussion earlier that has to be readdressed before the convention. As to what our role will be in that convention, um, as officially the Montana State Library. Uh, I know that Jenny presents and some of the staff, which is great. Um, Jenny said us giving out books on behalf of publishers. That many of which were really, really slanted one way and very, um. Yeah, that will not happen again. That was a one-time thing. The publishers asked us to do, so we don't have to address that, correct?
That's correct, Tammy, yeah.
Yeah. So other than that, I just think our role, from what I understand, is our staff presenting workshops, which is really helpful. And us attending, um. Especially that session, but, um, meeting will still be the day before and they will be encouraged to come. Is that gonna be the process? Good. I think it's a good year to start over.
Good. Good, I agree. Yes. I believe that they, I believe that there will be, it is, it is a start over, so. I'm thinking that it'll be good. Does anybody else have any comments about it? Any concerns?
Um, the way, the way I read their focus is their focus is on librarians. Um, I think. Maybe. Our focus should be on the patrons. As a, as a state library commission or as a state library, we're focused on patrons. Um, and this actually leads me into a different topic. We talked about the Elsa. And we were trying to figure out how to make. An award from the state library, um, meaningful. And it occurred to me that the, the focus even of the Elsa has been on what librarians do. And I want the focus to be on. What patrons get out of it, um. And, and just move the focus of how we measure that to patrons. And it's, it's very difficult because I thought, well, one metric we could use is library cards. But if you just say, in order to get a free pretzel every Wednesday, you have to come to the library and get a library card. You will have unbelievable numbers of library cardholders, but it doesn't really mean anything. So it's very difficult, um, thinking about the award, what, what we could incentivize and how we could measure that. To make the award more, um, meaningful. So I just, I just that, that focus on librarians versus patrons. Of course, it's not completely a division. If you have a good librarian, your patrons will benefit. But still, I, what I really want to measure is the effect on patrons.
I think that's great Carmen. And that reminds me, maybe we should have our work on the Elsa be a, be a, yet another goal, an eighth goal.
It's just something to keep in mind if you can add it to the list of, of what we'll look at. I think that would be good.
Sounds good. That sounds good.
I see our chair has stepped away from her video camera for a second. But, Madam Chair.
Sorry about that, yes.
I'm just revisiting mentally the minutes from the last meeting. Where, um, the Elsa award was. Basically done away with. But, uh, if, if we want to create a new award, that's, uh. That's within our, our scope. And did I, do I remember the action of that meeting correctly?
Tracy might need to remind me, but I think we decided to continue with the current award for one more year. While we were envisioning what a future award would look like.
Right, right, because they had all, because everybody had already done the work, the paperwork. Everything to submit for the award. Correct? Am I correct?
Or, or it's close to that time.
It's to that time.
That is correct. And to speak to Tom's point though, what you had said was consider periodically. And in my notes, um, you wanted to talk to the library community about. What they would see valuable. And I think you were probably starting to get to what Carmen was saying with the patrons. It was like, what is going on locally? How are people locally benefiting? And giving back in their community. Uh, I can look up my notes, but you are correct, Tom. It was not to be given annually. The idea was periodically, every two to three years, and you wanted it to be measurable in some way and as objective as possible.
Thank you. I might just, uh, throw this into this, uh, discussion, since it is a discussion. The libraries are required to fill out that public library survey form. And that's a tremendous amount of work. And I think awards could be given based just on that raw data. And we're a very data-driven organization here. We could, we could not require another thing from them. And, uh, the award could be. Could be, um. Based on snapshot in time, the current. It could be based on improvements in certain of those critical metrics. Um, um, and it could, I, I just offer those things based on the PLS.
And, you know, in, in conjunction with saying, let's not do it yearly, I like the idea of looking at, looking at a trajectory. To identify a sustained effort in some direction. Um, and it could be something that is. Actually given retroactively without the libraries knowing that it's coming. Um, because then you would. You would measure somebody's effort that they just make because they're motivated. Um, sometimes when you incentivize something. You create a behavior that is actually not necessarily what you want. You know, like, like my example with giving out free pretzels in order to get more library cardholders. Yes, you have incentivized that more people come to the library, but. Did you actually get the results that in your mind you thought you were aiming for? Probably not. Um, so if we actually, you know, look five years back and look for who has increased. I don't know, the, the library cards percent, percentage-wise to their popular, service population. I don't know, maybe, maybe that would, we, we wouldn't be incentivizing some. Behavior that is actually not what we want, but we would look back and see somebody working on something useful. I don't know.
Is, could we put, I'm, could we put out in a newsletter in some way? Um, asking patrons to maybe even recommend their library for some. Or some thing that, some outstanding program or some outstanding librarian or. I mean, maybe we should ask the patrons. And definitely you won't always get patrons that will see it, but they're. I mean, even just a sign in the library saying, hey, if we do something great. Contact. You know, send an email to, send an email here, um, to the state library or, or you know, or do. Tracy Cook or, I mean, something like that. Here, here's a QR, QRU code, scan this and tell us what you think. I mean. And it would go directly to the state library. First, you know, there's different things, different things like that. That would be great.
Or the trustees.
Yeah, right. Yeah, or your trustees.
Robin, or Madam Chair, sorry. Um, this is Tammy. I, I just want to remember, we're just. Point out, because of Brian's concern, which I thought was very valid of not overloading too many goals this way or that way. A lot of the things that we're talking about aren't really new goals. Like, it's always been our responsibility to set certification. That is our responsibility. It's something. It's not a new goal. It has to be done by us. Um, so, you know, these aren't always goals. A lot of this is clarifying how we're going to go about doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I just thought that was a point worth making. And, um, I think revisiting the, um. The award is a new goal. You know, we are revisi- we've always had the job to evaluate. It's only been in the last few years we discovered our tools were limited. Because they were aimed down to the employees, not up to the commission relationship. So that's been something we have to do. We have to fix that. Um, but this is definitely a wonderful new goal is to clarify this.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I believe that we've. Done good, we've completed goal setting. And we've, we've agreed about the Montana Library Association relationship. Now Jenny, why don't you talk about COSLA?
Yeah, so just to make sure you all know, COSLA stands for the Chief Officers of State Library Agencies. And it's the organization of. State library agencies, uh, that's the name that IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services gives to. The state library agencies that distribute our federal funding. So it, it's essentially my professional association. They are hosting a Voices for Libraries event in Washington DC, March fourth and fifth. Um, it's intended to be an opportunity for us to visit with our congressional delegation. And to talk to them about the importance of the federal funds that we receive in order to support library development here. I let Robin know about this event, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, with our new members of Congress, I think this is an important opportunity for us to educate them. About what IMLS is, the importance of our Library Services and Technology Act funds and how we use them to support and benefit. About what IMLS is, the importance of our library services and Technology Act funds and how we use them to support and benefit. Library services in Montana. So I just wanted to bring that to, to your awareness. The one question that Robin asked of me when, when I was telling her about this was whether or not there was any ALA involvement. In the event and, and there is not. And, um, we're not the only state library that has voiced that concern. And so our, our agenda is being built specifically. Uh, without involvement of ALA or, or their inclusion. ALA actually has their own Hill visits, which will occur. Later in the spring.
And I think that this is a very important, um. Conference for Jenny to attend. I know my sister, she went with one of her counter, with her counterpart that is Jenny. In Nebraska and it's a very worthwhile, worthy. Um, conference. And especially since she'll be talking to our new, our new representative, our new representative and then our new senator. It's all, and then even Ryan Zinkie, I, I don't know, did you have COSLA? Did, you didn't go to COSLA previously when?
Um, it's been several years.
Because of COVID and then everything else that went on. So it's, 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 it's a pretty important conference for her to attend.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, question for state librarian. How many? How many elected officials and, uh. Involved in the funding process are aware of the. The decade-long decline in library visitation. Is that a topic or do we just kind of hope that nobody talks about that?
Uh, we, we share all of the public library statistics with our congressional delegation and IMLS certainly does.
Of course, they wouldn't notice that if they didn't see a 10-year time, timeframe, if they just said, oh, here's the statistics that just shows last year. Uh, no interpretation allowed. Just a thought.
Madam Chair, this is Tammy. Um, we pay for this for Jenny, correct?
Um, yes, it does come out of our, our travel budget.
Okay, and so that's already appropriately covered.
That's right.
Okay. Um, do you, Tom, want to receive back information on the reaction to the question you just asked at this meeting?
To not talk about it would be, uh, would be sweeping something important under the rug. It might be good to have that, uh. To have that discussion even in brief. And say what the meaning of it might be and what.
Oh, you're addressing it.
What can be done about it, if anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Carmen.
Um, Jenny, would you please share with us the agenda for that, um. Meeting and then after, in the next commission session afterwards, just give us a little report of who you met and how many states were represented and.
I'd be happy to.
That would be great. Thank you.
I, 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 I assume we'll make probably some handouts or leave behinds for the congressional delegations that we can share with you as well.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Madam Chair, this is Tammy. Um, this is. I, I pro, I don't think this is new business. I just wanted to add this to what the, what we're doing as the Library Association. Um, the governor's fundraising, the lieutenant, um, the first lady's fundraising for. The Dolly Parton books to get, uh, books in the hands of all kids. Is, uh, in Helena, one of them on, on, I think next Tuesday or Wednesday, it's the 14th. Um, are we gonna be represented at that?
I was not aware of that event.
Yeah, I, I'm sure, I don't, I, I'm not. I don't know how to approach this. I don't know that we have to pay at the fundraiser for. That library, the Dolly Parton. And we did have the presentation from the first lady at one of our meetings. Um, and it just seems to me that that's a good cause for us to have a representative at. Uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to approve. The funding or to ask if we can have someone attend without. Paying for it. I don't know what would be appropriate. So I'm just asking. But it's at the Civic Center on. Uh, next Tuesday, the 14th. And it's only, it's appetizers and dancing and whatever, but it is a fundraiser for the. For the first lady's charity to get library books, I mean, the Dolly Parton. Collection of books free in the hands of every kid. And they've got quite an, I remember when she presented for us, they've got a really. Um, strong. Turnout so far, but they've gotten with the number of kids. Great, yeah. Peggy might. Have more information because she was there too. So I didn't know if we should be represented or what.
Yeah, I, um, you know, it's definitely a fundraiser where they want you to pay to attend, so I'm not sure. How that would be. A possible thing. And I'm not attending this year. So, um. But.
I, I know there's. I know there's prohibitions on using state monies.
Yeah.
For, for private fundraising.
So, eh, eh, which I definitely is a private. I believe, so, uh. It's a great program, but it'd be wonder if we could all attend, but not gonna happen this year.
And, and so.
My grandkids are signed up for it, so, yeah, great program.
They're up to almost 50% of the kids in Montana receiving free books.
Wonderful.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Carmen.
So the, um, what I know about that Imagine, Imagination Library is that the books are basically for free. But what the, um, Dolly Parton Imagination Library needs is a local contact. Um, in a community that is willing to facilitate the collection of addresses and names of the kids that are. Um, eligible to sign up. And then the, um. Uh, our, the, the, the First Lady's Foundation. Um, picks up the tab because there is a small part that needs to be. Um, paid in order to participate. So the. Uh, First Lady's Foundation in perpetuity has agreed to pay for any Montana kid that signs up. The local participation cost that needs to be paid. And, um, Flathead County Library is simply one of the. Spots where you can go and you will be helped to get signed up. And it's zero cost to the, the children, the families that sign up for it. Um, and we locally discussed this the other day because one of our main focuses. Um, as a local public library is, um, reading for small children. And one of the conclusions that research has come to is that the number of books in your home are extremely important. To developing the ability to read. And this is precisely what this Dolly Parton Imagination Library facilitates. So we're, we're looking at that being a main goal for our local library to support this particular program. Um, so that we as the library don't have to reinvent, um, a, a program that really reaches. Every kid between zero and five. Um, so I don't think as a state library, we can participate in any way in the fundraising. That is not appropriate. Um, but we sure could as a state library promote. Participation as a signup location for all our public libraries in the state.
Yeah. And so you're all aware that, um, the virtual ready to read rendezvous, which is the training that. Bobby Devatney provides for children's librarians is occurring in this next week. And Mrs. Jean Porte is the keynote speaker. We're gonna be doing kind of the same format that she. Had at the State Library Commission and answering similar questions. So we're excited to have her there. And then, um. We're hopeful that we'll receive some funding through DPHHS for their early childhood program. And we've been in conversations with. Um, Mrs. Jean Porte and her team about using some of those funds to procure some of the back. Catalog titles that the Dolly Parton Imagination Library has available. To make them available in places where, um, people who may not have a permanent address can be reached. One of the requirements of the program is that a family have a permanent address, so the books can be mailed to them. Which can be a barrier for some people. And so. Uh, one of our goals in working with them is to maybe have some books available in places like homeless shelters or WIC offices, food banks. And that kind of thing where people who don't have a permanent address could still get access to some of those books.
Thank you for that, Jenny. I really appreciate that. I just feel like it's a very valuable program that it's helpful for us to at least let people know it's out there.
Absolutely.
And I actually wonder if a library could use its address to be the pickup place for the books. I don't know if that's allowed.
I don't know either. That's a good question.
Jenny, would you send us the link?
Oh, sorry. Coverage in your public library service area of families could also be something we could eyeball for the Elsa.
Yeah.
Jenny, would you send us a link about the, um, about?
The rendezvous?
Yeah, for the rendez.
Yep, good.
That'd be great. Okay, okay. Okay, are we completed? With our discussion because I will go on to public comment if we are.
One last question?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, do we get written minutes or a digest of this meeting or just a recording?
We typically don't take minutes for work sessions. We do have the recording. But I was, I was just gonna review my notes, Robin. So I will share with you the link to how you can log on and listen to. Legislative hearings, including our budget hearing. And I'll, I'll be sure and send you that update next week when we have a direct link to that budget hearing. Um, I'll continue to include the commission on any legislative updates. That I share with staff, including giving you a heads up when there's any hearings that are coming up that we may participate in. Um, in an email with that information, I'll, I'll share back the consistent statement that we came up with. Um, we've decided that commissioners are going to be encouraged to attend the federation meetings, review those meeting dates. In February and encourage commissioners to sign up to attend them. The role is going to be to listen. And then to report back to the commission on topics or trends that you're hearing. If you could send me your notes about any goals that you took and, and Brian in particular, I'll, I'll combine those with mine. And we'll bring that as a document to your February meeting. Where we can talk about, where we can make sure we're, we're all on the same page about those goals and then. Think about the timeline and success metrics for those goals. Um. We've decided that this is a, a start over year with MLA. I'm really. Grateful and glad to hear that and look forward to participating in the conference. Um, I'll, I will share with you both the agenda as well as a follow-up report on the, uh. Voices for Libraries event that COSLA is hosting. And I'll share you, share with you information about. Um, the ready to read rendezvous. Did I miss anything?
Perfect.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Okay, Tom first and then Carmen just.
I have some information to request from the state librarian. Could you write up, um, or have one of the staff? Where we get the raw data for natural resource counts, species counts?
Where we get the raw data for natural species counts. Okay, it. Okay. I'll need to get some input from them and I suspect it varies. By species, but we'll do our best.
Okay, Carmen?
Yeah, and the, um. I had requested that we get a brief look at what legislative. And funding mechanisms continuing or in place already from.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thanks, thanks for that reminder, Carmen. On the February agenda. Okay.
Okay, alright. Any, any other comments before I go on to public? Okay, if not, is there any public comment on any matter not contained in this agenda? And that is within the jurisdiction of the State Library Commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Brian?
I would just like to give a shout out to the Missoula Public Library, which just this week won. Uh, an award from the International Federation of Library Associations, which named it the Best Green Library Grand Scale. And this is in the entire world. Um, so some examples of what they've done. This is a library that opened in, I think, 2001. Or 21, 2021. They have a living roof with, with vegetation on the top to capture, uh, carbon dioxide emissions. Um, they have a rooftop photovoltaic array which provides 10% of its electricity. And a state-of-the-art ventilation system. Um, they've constructed the library. To maximize use of daylight so that they minimize use of energy consumption for lighting. Um, and I just think this is a very prestigious and amazing award. I wanted to just make sure that you're all aware of this and. Offer my heartfelt congratulations to the Missoula Public Library. I think this is really a pretty cool thing that a library in Montana has won an, an award such as this.
Okay, should, um, should I, um, as the. Chair, the commission chair, would you like me to send an, an email to Slaven on our behalf? It's Slaven, correct, Jenny?
That's right, yep.
Should I do that? Because I certainly will.
I think that would be a, a very nice gesture.
Yes, I agree.
And, and that, the library is just amazing. When we were there, how long ago? Two years, three years ago?
A couple of years ago, yeah.
It was just amazing, amazing, incredible. So I will definitely do that. And I will send her an email on our behalf. Okay, alright. Um, seeing as there is no other, is there any other public comment? Seeing as there is no other, is there any other business or announcements? And as, as there.
I just want to thank everybody. This was a very, very productive meeting for me and I learned a lot and I'm very grateful for this whole format.
Thank you, Tammy. I agree. I, I appreciate everybody's input and, um, and taking the time to. To spend this snowy Friday afternoon together. Um, if we don't have any other further business, I'm going to ask for a move. Or a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the January 3rd, 2025 work session of the Montana State Library Commission is adjourned. Alright. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yes, enjoy Phoenix, enjoy Frisco. Everybody have a great, safe.